Alright, everybody ready? Alright, ladies and gentlemen, I call it a meeting to order. And welcome everybody here today to our February the 29th, 2024 meeting. This is a leap year meeting here. And it's a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors and the School Board. So thank you everybody for coming. Um, I got one thing I need to read here. I've received a request from by Mr. Jimmy Brand to participate in the meeting tonight by electronic communication from a remote location due to illness. I have approved such participation upon the county's adopted remote participation policy and ask that the Board of Supervisors ratify this decision to allow Mr. Brand to participate remotely. Board members, I have a motion for that.
I'll make a motion, uh, Mr. Brands.
Alright, and a motion second, all those in favor say aye. Mr. Brand, are you attending here tonight?
Yes, I'm on.
Alright, glad to have you here, Mr. Brand, hope you're feeling better. Alright. Um, one other thing I'm gonna say, uh, this goes, gonna tell the School Board that, uh, we have entered, the Board has entered into a agreement with UH wide for a audit. And, uh, we've entered into that and we want to get your participation, your support of the audit. So, wanna keep you up to date on what's going on. Alright, Ms. Christopher.
Okay. The meeting will now come to order, we have established the quorum, at this time I will turn it back to Mr. Haney, uh, who will conduct the meeting.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Christopher, thank you all for coming. Alright, first item on the agenda would be the School Board Budget Presentation, Dr. Worgo, Tara Booth.
Thank you, Mr. Haney.
You now.
Thank you, um, so we passed out a paper copy of a document that we will be working through this evening. And I believe Mrs. Booth is going to work through that for our audience on the screen that's behind us. Um, if you turn your page, you'll see a table of contents, um, we had, we have nine sections in this document. Section one will be working through introductory information. Section two, revenue detail. Section three, expenditure detail. Section four, supplemental information. Section five, school nutrition budget. Section six, we'll be discussing capital improvements. Section seven, transportation fleet information. Section eight, federal funds. And then section nine is our Q and A. So if we move forward in your, um, proposal here, you can see that the page numbers are on the bottom right. And I am going to move to page two, um, where we want to thank our Board of Supervisors for meeting this evening. And we would also like to welcome Mr. Fisher and Mr. Williams to the Board. So, um, we're excited to work with you. I also want to publicly acknowledge our County Administrator, Mr. Tadlock, and our Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Basie. Um, we work closely with, um, the County Administrator's Office. If you proceed to page three, you will see our School Board listed with a special welcome to Dr. Dave Curran, who is our, uh, a new member to our Board as we all know. If you move to page four, you'll see that we included our budget calendar for the 2024-2025 budget. And we did have an early submission as we all agreed upon, um, giving our budget to the County Administrator in January. On page five, you will see a budget transmittal letter. I am going to read through most of this because it captures what you will be reviewing this evening. Dear Northumberland County Public Schools School Board and Northumberland Board of Supervisors, the fiscal year 2425 operational budget is $22,151.20, an increase of $193,611 or 0.88%. And the fiscal year 2425 school nutrition budget is $724,521. This is an increase of $69,840 or 10.67%. The School Board request including operational and school nutrition is $22,875.541. This is an increase of $263,451 or 1.17%. The operational budget proposes increases in the essential areas of employee compensation, regional program participation, and increases to supplies, materials, electricity, and fuel costs. The fiscal year 2425 capital improvement budget requests are included in this budget proposal. This capital improvement budget prioritizes the use of new construction funds in the amount of $1,134,172 for the elementary school boiler replacement, which we have shared with our supervisors. That's in the amount of $173,121.48. The School Board plans to apply the remaining new construction funds to elementary school flooring upgrades. That's in the amount of $171,479.92. Replacement of the elementary school playground in the amount of $376,745.60. Repairs to the concrete walkways at the middle and high school in the amount of $53,145. A roof, a rooftop stairway at the elementary school in the amount of $67,140. And resurfacing the athletic track in the amount of $292,540. The proposal includes a 1.25% step increase for scaled employees and a health insurance increase of 7.2%. And, um, I'm not going to kind, I guess we can, I'll just read through this whole thing. By law, this proposal must be balanced with revenue that equals expenditures. The NCPS School Board has engaged in work sessions and they have held public hearings for the proposed budget. The School Board reviewed budget requests from educational stakeholders, including but not limited to students, parents, families, employees, and community members. Our School Board publicly acknowledges and thanks our County Administrator, our Assistant County Administrator, the Board of Supervisors, all who consistently support the School Division and fund the programs and instructional initiatives that make Northumberland County Public Schools a leading school division in the Northern Neck. This budget's objective is to balance available resources and continue support of important division priorities. With full funding of this proposal, the School Division will be able to compensate our current employees with competitive salaries, continue to offer relevant instructional programs, and provide transportation and facilities that are safe and reliable. This is signed, myself, Holly Worgo, Division Superintendent, and Mrs. Tara Booth, our Director of Finance. So that's our budget transmittal letter. If we continue, I'm looking at page six next. You will see 2024-2025 budget priorities, and I'm gonna have Mrs. Booth, um, cover these.
So the Board gave us several things they wanted us to look at. One was, um, level funding, they wanted us to include staff raises, be able to cover the health insurance increase. We were asked to evaluate paraprofessional salary scale, review class size. We were looking for three security officers, one per school, and look at purchasing the secured ID badges.
As we move on, page seven, Mrs. Booth is gonna be detailing budget efficiencies.
So if I back up a little bit, um, I had checked with every, uh, director and principal, and we looked at the items in their budget and looked at what lines they had where we could find efficiency.
At Northumberland Elementary, there was a paraprofessional position that we would not be having for next year. That was in the amount of $51,619. There was after-school remediation, we didn't need $2,200. Cut instructional supplies by 1,500. Under the principal's line of purchase services, we cut 1,500. Under the principal dues and memberships, we cut 400. And under special education materials and supplies, we cut 3,000. For Northumberland Middle School, under purchase services testing for elementary, and the reason it's like that for those of you don't know is that the middle school is identified, sixth and seventh grade is actually considered elementary by the state, and eighth grade is considered high school, so it's kind of broken up. So purchase services for testing elementary, we were able to reduce by 700. Travel expenses by 1,000. Purchase services for testing at the middle level for 700. We were able to reduce textbooks by $6,500. And if you remember, you approved that all-in special appropriation where we have money to fund textbooks. And then we were able to reduce materials by 1,200. At Northumberland High School, we did not fill the EMT teacher this year, so that position is, is listed here. The dual enrollment math teacher position. Textbooks, we cut with by 30,000. Instructional supplies, uh, we cut by 10,000. Travel by 2,000, and library materials and supplies, cut 1,000. In transportation, Ms. Branham was able to reduce the drivers by one. Um, under administration and health, we were able to reduce purchase services by 10,000. Under technology, we were able to reduce admin materials by 1,700 and facilities infrastructure by 8,300.
If you, uh, will go to page eight, we wanted to give you a comparison with Region Three School Divisions. So you will see our Region Three School Divisions listed on the left. Northumberland, obviously, is part of Region Three. And the columns, um, with information for you to review. Um, the first column is fiscal year 25 salary proposals, step, cost of living. Um, again, these are proposals because most school divisions, um, have not adopted their budget yet. The next column has fiscal year 25 proposed zero-year experienced teacher salary for a comparison. And then the last column has health insurance premium status. Um, so you can see the different, um, rate increases or decreases or neutralities. On page nine, we have health and, yes, sir.
Ask questions before you go long.
Sure.
Plan to replace that?
Uh, no, not, we are not planning to replace that. It was an efficiency listed. The reason, um, we, we could not find an EMT teacher for this year, and we were trying to, um, honor what the Board requested with, um, approximate level funding. I can't say that it is level funding, but we tried as hard as we could to keep that, um, total at a minimum for the requested budget.
Why wouldn't you able to cut so much from textbooks?
I can't, I can't hear you, Mr. Long, I'm sorry. Can you take it closer?
Why, why will you be able to cut so much from textbooks?
We were able to cut it because we received a grant from the state, the all-in grant. Um, the Board of Supervisors had approved that special appropriation a few months ago, and that was for 252,000 and change. And part of that was for textbooks. And then we also plan on using some of our ESAR money to cover the rest of the textbooks. We, for this new language arts program, we're having to purchase all new language arts textbooks, K through eight. And we, we have the funding to do that without having to use local dollars.
That's VLA?
Yes, um, so the acronym that you may hear is VLA. It stands for Virginia Literacy Act. And we actually had required training today in Spotsylvania for the entire day on VLA.
Alright.
You're welcome. So I'm going to progress to page nine, and we have health insurance information here. Um, Mrs. Booth, would you like to just give us a brief summary on that?
Sure, um, I just made the changes for the different programs that we offer with the 7.2 increase and leaving the employee share the same, which is that fourth column over to the right or second, um, second from the end. The, if we kept the employee share the same, the monthly share goes up. If this, if the additional funding to cover the health insurance is not included, then the final column there is what the monthly employee share will be with, to cover that increase, um, through the employee instead of the employer.
Alright, we're going to move to revenue detail, and if you could join us on page 11.
So a lot of our state funding decreased, which we knew when our composite index, composite index increased. Our revenue from sales tax is expected to be $1,585,800, which is a decrease of $75,256. Our revenue from the state is also expected to decrease to $3,527,190, which is a decrease of $1,360,362. Our federal funds are expected to decrease. Um, our revenue is expected to be $1,064,335. Oh, no, I read the wrong one, I'm sorry, $944,068, which is a decrease of 12267. Our county funds would be an increase from, uh, 15642818 to 17224323. That's an increase of 1.58505. And then from other funds, we expect an increase of $4,000. The total there then is at the bottom for the total school operations. Shows that there is an, an increase of $29,620, $29,620, excuse me.
Next on page.
What was the increase on the county's part again? 1.?
1.5.
Eight.
Thank you, eight, one, 505.
It's on page 11.
Do you need my?
That number's on page 11?
Yeah.
Oh, got it, thank you.
Okay.
Alright, so we're going to move forward to expenditure detail.
So the first document that I included here is updated. I had shared, um, something similar to this with Mr. Tadlock earlier in, in the year, and we had presented something to the school earlier in the year. Originally, we had put in the health insurance increase as an estimate at 12% increase on the employer share. So with the 7.2 on the whole thing, it was a little bit different. It was a little bit less than what our original thought was. Thinking the, the first time, we thought the total was gonna be about $215,000 over, um, where you can see the 163, 193,611 right here. That was, we thought it was gonna be 215,000 over, but this is, um, accurate, I updated this today. So in it, in each category, the first column shows you what was approved for last fiscal year. Um, and then it shows what the original request was, and then added to that would have been the health insurance. So when we actually did the health insurance, it was $16,41,787 for instruction. For admin and health, $1,394,397. For transportation's actually a decrease of $14,241 to 1.501,774. Operations and maintenance had an increase to 2,000, 2,127,724. We kept facilities the same. Our debt service did increase, and just to make you all aware, this is our, the only thing in this category is the payment that we make to the Northern Neck Tech Center for our ISA EP program, which is basically our GED program. And so that cost does increase each year. And we did an estimate for what we expect it to be this year, which is that 8664. It did go up last year, so that category was overspent. I believe the bill we got was 81 something or, 81 or 82 hundred dollars. So when you see that we overspent by, I think it was $600, that's why we got the bill, that's what it was. Um, the technology line increased by 5,199 to 1.26174. And that brought our total operations and Fund One to $22,151.20, which is an increase of 193,611, which is less than 1% at 0.88% increase. The school nutrition budget, when we received a letter from the state that we had received excessive funds to what we had in our budget, we had to fill out a document and submit it to them on how we would use those funds. And as you know, those funds are not from local taxpayer dollars, and we can only use them on items that are in the school nutrition budget. Uh, we put in for a lot of new appliances and things that we need to help in the kitchens. So even with this increase here in the total change, that's not out of local dollars. But that was an increase of $69,840, so that that budget went up to 724,521. Our federal expenditures, um, went up 28,411 to 1,210,411.
Alright, we are moving to page 14 with an expenditure recapitulation.
So this basically tells you the same thing that I just went over. It just includes on the far right what percentage of the budget each category is. So you can see that instruction is 72.42%. Administration and health is 6.29%. People transportation, 6.78%. Operations and maintenance, 9.61%. Facilities, 0.23%. Other debt service and transfers, 400ths of a percent, and technology is 4.63%.
Thank you, Mrs. Booth, okay, so now if you, we work, we go to page 15, you'll see section four with supplemental information, primarily this section has salaries. And Mrs. Booth, do you want to describe, um, what the Board of Supervisors will see there?
So we've included the salary scales for every category of employee. Um, there's been a lot of confusion this year when the governor introduced that 2%. So I'll take just a minute to try and explain to you what we did and, and what you can see here. So the governor, as you know, said that SOQ positions for schools, they would fund a 2% increase for half of the year. So for my math people, that's the same, 2% for half of a year is the same as 1% over the entire year. So what we did was we found 1% of the staff salary. The School Board voted for us to make that increase for all employees. That's when I met with the directors and principals, and that's when we did our first round of efficiencies to see if we could accommodate that funding within the current budget. We were able to do that. So in January, all staff received the, the 2% for the six months. So when I did this year's salary scales, I started with the salary at the beginning of last year and added 2% for the whole year, which would have been the 1% they got in June, plus an additional percent. So out of the 2% on the original salary from last school year, and then I added the 1.25% step. So that's what all of these scales are showing, the 2% from their original contract last year, and then the step increase. And there are scales here for every position within Northumberland County Public Schools.
The step increase was added after the 2%?
Correct. I don't know that there's any need to really go through all the scales. If you don't see that you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer anything you may have.
And that's a pretty big section, yes, Mr. Long.
How about your bus driver? Did they get an increase?
Same thing.
Okay, because every county, you drive through to looking for bus drivers. How about the insurance?
Um, in our proposal, it would, it would cover the 7.2% for their insurance as well, for those that are full-time.
Alright, we are going to progress to page 44. And I'm gonna give you a moment, cuz, um, so that's page 44. And we are going to be reviewing the school nutrition budget.
So I apologize for those of you that are in the public, and this is sideways on the screen. Um, I included here the updated, uh, school nutrition budget. Um, for the most part, there were changes in the salary because they also would receive the 2% increase in the step. Additionally, the coverage for health insurance for the full-time employees. And then any additional funds went to school food. And as, um, you may have heard from our director, Ms. Hamlet, she has been trying to buy more fresh food and more local food. She's been buying beef locally, she's been buying some of her produce locally. And of course, that's increased the cost. But again, she's getting the reimbursements from the government, and it's covering those increases.
If you will go to page 48, this is our capital improvement section. And Mr. Basie is in receipt of our capital improvement requests in the new format. Um, currently, we are awaiting our boilers at the elementary school. We are expecting that delivery next week. Um, and as I shared earlier, we would like to use our new construction funds for the projects outlined in the budget transmittal letter. I do have the letter, um, from August 2nd on page 50. And we appreciate that the supervisors replaced the roof on the bank. Um, the School Board Attorney and, I believe, the supervisor's legal counsel have been in discussions about the deed for the bank property.
Do we know the status of that? It's.
What's the status on that?
I, I have not gotten an update on that.
Is it, since it went on since August?
Yeah, I, I think, um, I, I know Mr. Gregory and the School Division's legal counsel have been in discussions, um, but I.
Do you know what the holdup is? Cuz that, we're both paying legal fees, so that's kind of ridiculous to make it go so long.
Well, I, I do not, no.
Who, who would know?
Well, I can certainly reach out to, uh, Eric Gregory, our legal counsel, and, um, I, if you all can reach out to your legal counsel and see exactly what they may be, uh, having discussions at that point.
So both lawyers are holding it up, is that what you're saying?
Uh, that's, that's where that particular item is at this, this moment.
Okay, we'll do that.
If I can just add that the estimates on the letter from August 2nd are updated in the transmittal letter at the beginning. We do have updated requests. So if you go back to that letter that Dr. Worgo has at the beginning of the packet, you'll see what those updated estimates are.
Alright, if we go to page 51, this information is provided for your review, it's, uh, transportation fleet details for the next couple pages. And then if we go to page 54. And then if we go to page fifty-four, this section deals with federal funds. And on page fifty-five, you'll see an Omega report. Omega is our online management of education grant awards. Mrs. Booth, would you like to summarize?
Sure. So most of the federal SR money and all of the set aside grants that came with that are due to be expended by September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. We are on target, we expect to have all of that expended by June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four, so that none of those funds will be carried over into the next fiscal year. On this sheet, it just shows you, if you go over where it says funds available, that's just what has not been reimbursed yet. In some cases, some of it has been expended, and some cases it has not. It is, it is, but it has all been encumbered. So the SR three unfinished learning, that's all encumbered. The Perkins Title One, that's all encumbered. The ARP SR three is all encumbered. The Title Five Part B, the top one, the seven thousand, four fifty-one, sixty-four, that's been encumbered, we've reimbursed all the rest, that's just what's left there. The SR three before and after school, that will be spent before June thirtieth. And the IDEA Part B Section six eleven this year has already been completely reimbursed. So the money that's there that you see at the bottom of this page, the two twenty-eight, that is, will be reimbursed between this year and next fiscal year as we use it. On the next page, it's just continuing with the Omega information. So the next one that you see there is the ESEA Title One, Improving Basic Programs. So we still have seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and one dollars for the current fiscal year to spend and reimburse, some of that is salaries. So we, we send that information in quarterly. And then our new amount that's through the end of September of two thousand and twenty-five is the four hundred seventy-two thousand there. The Title Four, we have thirty-seven thousand, seven forty-eight to, it is encumbered to reimburse before, I believe it's mid-November, but once it's expensed, we'll get those reimbursements in. We've already finished all of our SR three summer school money, we used that the last two summers. And then the last one is Title Two, Supporting Effective Instruction. We still have thirteen, little over thirteen thousand for this year to use before the end of September, and then we have the sixty-two thousand for next year. And one of the things I'd like to add is that I think it's really important, some of this is covered in, in the questions and the answers, but I think this is a good time to kind of have a little conversation about it. So a lot of our positions and a lot of purchases, we were able to make with SR funds. So a lot of times when schools get funds, you're not allowed to do what's called supplanting, which means if it's something that you're already doing, you're not allowed to use that money to pay for it. So if you're already paying for a math specialist, you're not allowed to supplant and have a grant to pay for your math specialist. SR funds were not that way. SR funds had a lot of leniency, happened during COVID, there was a lot of opportunity for communities to be in a better place, and that was the whole point of those funds, was to make it not so stressful on the locality. So we went back and we tried to reimburse from last year's budget. We tried to reimburse everything that we could out of the SR funds. So when you see that there was money that will be turned back to the county, a lot of that is because there were items that we took out of the general fund and moved into SR. So for those of you that were here, in the beginning, it was really hard for me to figure out where everything was because expenses were not all allocated in to the right location. And we, we're still working on that, but we're, we're making tremendous progress. That should be all cleared up here before too long. But moving forward, we've got our, our reimbursements that we're doing regularly. But those expenses that we were previously able to charge to SR, we don't, we don't have SR funds anymore after this year. So we're not going to have, we won't have the money to support some of the positions that we currently have, and we won't have the extra money to purchase some of the extra things that we've been able to do, you know, materials for the JROTC STEM building, the materials for the wanding and the metal detectors, all those things that were bought with SR money. I just want to make sure everybody knows that after September, there's none of that money left. So there won't be, there won't be any of that. So our budget will be back strictly just to what you're seeing here in this request.
And I believe our final section this evening, section nine, has the questions and the answers. And Mr. Chairman and Madam Chair, that concludes our budget presentation for this evening.
All right, ladies, that was a very good presentation, a lot of helpful information in there. I know it, I know it took this booth quite a while to try to get a lot of this straight. And also you too, Dr. Laura, I know you were involved with it too, so thank you very much for this.
Thank you.
Any board members have any questions?
Right now.
Staff have any questions at this time? Right? Right? Don't have any questions or anything. Let's see, School Board have any comments or questions to the board?
Mr. Haney, Mrs. Booth has paperwork for the Virginia Tiered Systems of Support Grant that she'd like to share with your permission?
Yes, ma'am, please do.
So I just, I didn't know if you all had any questions. I had shared a letter with Mr. Tadlock on February second about this grant. The division allocation is twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. We, we've already received the funds. And I gave each of you a copy of the actual grant application so you could see how we had submitted the application and how those funds would be used. And I know it's a special appropriation, I didn't know if you were willing to approve it this evening or not, but I will not be in attendance. We have a meeting with the VDOE on the night of your March board meeting, and so we'll be in Richmond. And I wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to ask any questions if you had any prior to that time.
All right, board members have any questions? This is a, what is it, it's just an in and out?
Yes, sir.
Appropriation. Questions? Mr. Brand, I forgot about you being online. You have any questions?
No, not at this time.
Okay. And if, if, if you, if you have any questions on the budget at this time also?
No, I'm good, I just want to read over the information that we received.
Okay, all right. Staff have any questions?
Is that special appropriation request something you wanted voted on tonight or just at their regular meeting?
If it's possible to do it tonight, that would be wonderful. Our staff's waiting to spend the funds, it has to be, they have to spend it by the end of the school year.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
It's in and out, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure they will prove. All right, I got a motion to approve, do I have a second?
A second.
All right, I got a motion, a second. All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those against?
Did Mr. Brand vote?
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies, y'all have anything else?
No, sir.
No, sir.
All right, well, I appreciate y'all coming tonight. Really do. Good, good presentation. Give us a chance to look all this over. And we got a lot of, we got questions that we've answered, so we'll look through that. That's good. All right, you have any questions for the board today?
Would you like to do a draw?
Yes, ma'am, we, we have some other business to attend, and you, y'all are welcome to stay.
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. And what I appreciate is we have stuck to our calendar and what we said we'd do as the joint, you know, as the joint committee, the finance committee. And I am hopeful that on the Board of Supervisor, that we'll be able to get a contract much earlier, since we presented a budget much earlier. So I look forward to our continued addressing and meeting our goals.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, the boards are gonna do their best to stick to the schedule. It's gonna involve more meetings for us, but that's all part of it. So we're gonna spend more time meeting, try to go through everything. So we're, we're gonna try to stay on schedule as close as we can.
Great. Do we have a, a set time for our next meeting together?
Oh, we can set that today if y'all want. I'm glad you brought that up. When would y'all like to meet? May? Toward the end, toward the end of May? We got anywhere from the twentieth to the thirty-first. That's the last two weeks in May.
Those are the last two weeks of school, right?
Anything good for you in the? Graduations are eighteen, so anything after, you know?
The thirtieth is a Thursday night, is that already taken on y'all's schedule?
I have anything down, it's for the thirtieth right now. Do you have anything on your agenda?
Do we agree?
Y'all want to do it on the thirtieth at six P M?
May thirtieth.
Thirtieth, that sounds good.
All right, let's set it up for the thirtieth, for May the thirtieth at six P M here.
Okay.
All right. First of all, does any other members have anything?
All right, at six fifteen, I make a motion that we adjourn, do I hear a second?
Second.
Vote?
Aye.
All right, thank you all, thank you all for coming again.
Mr. Chair, do you want to take a brief recess?
Ladies, gentlemen, we're gonna take a ten-minute recess and come back. We'll call this meeting back to order. We'll get on with our next items, which would be the county administrative items.
Yes, sir, the first item I have is regarding the regional radio system. As the board knows, we have financed the regional radio system through the Bank of America. And one of the conditions of that is that we are to provide them all of the contracts and lease agreements with L three Harris Microwave Network and the American Tower, ATC, which has the, the tower itself, and we're trying to lease space on the, the tower itself. As, as you know, earlier this month, Chief Balderson came before the board and ATC had proposed a certain lease agreement with the, the county. And through the discussions with the board, the board had also approved up to that amount, but also they, you all were looking for any reduction in, in that amount as well. Staff went back and reviewed the lease agreement with ATC. We are still in negotiations with ATC. As, as of this afternoon, they did forward some additional information back to staff. So we are, we have not gotten a chance to review that material in detail. So it, it does look promising that they, they are willing to, to come down off some of the, the pricing. But due to that negotiation that we've been having with ATC, we have not finalized the lease agreement with, with that company, which Bank of America does need in order to proceed in paying the, the pay request that we have, have pending. We do have, Microwave Network is, has submitted two invoices. One of those invoices, we have submitted to Bank of America, but they have not processed that because they are waiting on that additional information. The bank, Microwave Network is, they do have some money tied up in equipment. And they are wanting payment. If not, then they are looking at assessing any type of late penalty on those, on those invoices. We did have a meeting, a staff had a meeting with bond counsel, legal counsel, and Davenport, which is the financial advisor for the county, to see what paths forward we might have in trying to accommodate Microwave Networks. And if we, we, we didn't want to do anything to jeopardize our loan with Bank of America. So through that discussion, one, one suggestion was that if the county has the funds to pay for the two invoices, and that amount is two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars, that we go ahead and pay those funds, and then at such time that we do get the lease agreement completed with American Tower, then we seek reimbursement from, from Bank of America. So in essence, it would be in and out monies from the, the county standpoint. So really, that's what, I did check with the, the Treasurers Office, and we do have the, the funds available to cover that for the, the next, hopefully, month or two, hopefully it won't be that long. I think we're starting to see the light of the, at the end of the tunnel here with ATC. So what we would ask is that the, the board authorized county staff to move forward in wiring the funds in the amount of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars, so that we can get that to the Microwave Network, and then seek reimbursement from Bank of America for the county.
So if we don't appropriate that money now, we're just holding up the whole process, right?
We, it's basically what we would potentially run the risk of is incurring late fees from Microwave Network. And also, they have, they have not submitted any other invoices at this time. So basically, it's, they're still proceeding forward, L three Harris and Microwave Networks still L3 Harris and Microwave Networks is still proceeding forward. Now, I don't think Microwave Networks has not sent the equipment. They have not shipped the equipment yet. So they, they are still in, in possession of that equipment. So as of right now, it would just be to authorize staff to wire that money to Microwave Network. And then once we receive those funds, we would come back to the board for the supplemental appropriation to that line item.
Mr. Brand, you, you still online?
Yeah, so I'm still online.
You got any comments on this?
No, uh, in dealing with these folks in the past with another system, I'm sure they've got some items that they need to pay as well. So I, I think we would probably be about off to go on and authorize staff to make this payment and get the money back when we can, uh, get the money through the Bank of America.
Yeah, I think that would be the best thing to do. We go on, get this thing taken care of because we don't need the late fees or anything. And we don't want any hard feelings between them. Any other discussion on this?
That's it. I make a motion to move forward.
Move forward with the 268, 946. All right. Got a motion, got a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
What else you need, Mr. Tadlock?
All right, the next item I have is the Web Boring LLC. The initial contract, and this is in reference to the sewer pipe replacement under Cockle Creek. The initial contract amount that we signed with Web Boring was $375,000. And after they got into the, the project, they realized that you need to relocate some of the locations as to where the end of the boring was going to occur, which incurred additional cost, um, of additional $25,000. The board did authorize for the emergency procurement up to $400,000. The total invoice is $400,000. But during that discussion, we, we spoke about the possibility of using part ARPA funds and part capital improvement funds. And after reviewing the ARPA funds and also receiving the bids back from the, the drain field project down to the school, we, we only have roughly 600 and some thousand dollars in ARPA funds left. And with that, the, the bids, it's approximately $633,000 left in ARPA funds. And with that, the, the project, in talking with the engineer, I think the drain field project would probably run around 500,000. The, the bids came in, what, 700, 800,000? And so they, they were higher, as the board knows, and we decided not to accept any of those bids. So with that, not knowing how much of the ARPA funding that we would need for that particular project, what I would suggest is that the board take those monies out of the capital improvement fund and pay for the project entirely out of the, the capital improvement, uh, funding. We do have approximately 1.1 million in, uh, capital improvement funds. So we do have plenty in that to, to cover that cost. So if the board is, is in agreement with that, I would just need a motion to approve Web Boring invoice in the amount of $400,000 to be paid out of the CIP monies with a supplemental appropriation and transfer to 9103-7021 for the emergency procurement.
Much pleasure, Board.
I think we need to move forward.
Your motion is to approve the 400,000?
Yeah, 400,000.
All right, motion to approve the 400,000 to Web Boring. Got a motion, got a second?
That's coming out of the capital improvement fund.
Out of the capital improvement fund.
Yep, second.
All right.
Yes.
We got a motion, a second. Any other discussion?
And, and that would be a supplemental appropriation transfer to that 9103-7021.
All right, you want to amend the motion and put that, um, line item in there?
Yes, sir. We, we want to make sure we capture that line.
Amend the motion with the line item that Lutz will need right there, at nine, 91, whatever it is. All right, all right, you, Mr. Long?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Brand, you got any comments?
None at this time, no.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, there you go.
All right. I think that's all I had, other than the closed meeting item.
All right. Um, got an update on, um, on the, on the reassessment?
We just advertised, uh, for the proposals for the reassessment that went out this week. And that was advertised on EVA, the state site. And I can, if you hold on one second, I can tell you when they are due.
All right. And, uh, we planning on doing the appraisal this year?
They, they would start this year, yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
The reassessment RFPs are due March 20th at 2:00 PM.
All right. March 20th, 2:00 PM.
March 20th.
All right. How the budget request coming in?
They, they were all due end of January. So we, we should have everybody's request at this point.
All right. Now, if we get started on to the budget, soon as you can get to it. About a car.
I have plenty to do.
About a car on the south.
What was that, Jim?
Well, a car being on the south.
We, we do actually, while the board is, um, we had also discussed for the March 7th meeting to have Dominion Energy speak about solar and smart meters. But in talking with the Dominion Energy representative, they were asking that those two items be separated so we could spend a lot of time on solar and, and a lot of time on, on the smart meters. So what they were asking, if, uh, April 4th, uh, and we didn't have a time, but they were asking if April 4th would work for the board of supervisors to meet that day.
That, is that agreeable with all the board?
It is with me.
That okay with you too, Jimmy?
April the 4th?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, what time?
6:00 PM.
Okay.
Okay.
April the 4th, 6:00 PM.
Yep, that's agreeable with everybody.
All right, uh, I'll get with Dominion Energy representative and get that set up.
All right. Anything else you have or anything else you need?
But the one on the 7th, we still have it.
Yeah, that's correct, yes, sir.
That's, that's gonna be on solar, Jim. And they were on, on the?
What time, the 4th?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
Fourth is 6:00 PM, and that's on smart meters.
Great.
All right. Anything else you need right now before we go into closed meeting? All right. If we don't have anything else, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed meeting and I'll get the proper wording from you, Mr. Tadlock.
I need a motion from the board that the Northland County Board of Supervisors convene and include me pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.237, A1, where the discussion and consideration of personnel matters. Invited to attend the closed meeting is necessary or the county administrator or assistant county minister. They are deemed necessary and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia 40, Section 2.237, 12F.
All right, motion to what Mr. Tadlock just said.
To move.
A second.
Second.
A second, all right.
All right, you seconded it, Vern.
All those in favor? It's the way it is, don't make any difference. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Ladies, gentlemen, we are in closed meeting now. Thank y'all for attending. You're welcome to wait and hear what we have, have to say after, but, uh, I don't know how long we'll be. Stand a motion and come out of closed meeting?
Sir, I need a motion by the Northland County Board of Supervisors to return to public meeting and certify by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
All right, we got a motion. Got a second?
Second.
Wait a minute.
Did you make the motion?
Chip made the motion.
Yeah, yes.
Give him your second? All right, got it straight this time. All right, roll call vote. Uh, Jimmy?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Chip?
Aye.
Aye. Any action you need taken?
Uh, no, sir. I just carry over.
I, I need to, a motion to carry over till, uh, March the 7th at 6:00 PM.
You doing the one on the 4th?
On a, on a, no, we, we got, we got one on the 7th, Jimmy.
Okay.
That's with, that's with Dominion.
Right, I thought the smart meters were on the 4th.
No, that Dominion has changed.
Okay.
They want to do the solar on the 7th.
Okay.
And then do the smart meters on the 4th of April.
All right, okay, I misunderstood you, okay.
They didn't feel that they had enough time to do both. You know, put, put the presentation on plus answer questions.
Okay. And 6 o'clock on the 4th of April?
Yeah, 6 o'clock on the 4th of April.
Okay.
All right, right now, we got a, uh, we're trying to get a motion to carry over till March the 7th.
Okay.
At 6:00 PM.
So move.
All right, I got a motion and got a second. I got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all for coming.